Well, the stairwells are both all fireproof, so they're all directed if they have, if there's a fire or any kind of emergency, they are directed to go to the stairwells and wait for the fire department and emergency services to get there. We, most of our, my residents, probably ninety-nine point five percent of them can get down the stairs and get up the stairs if they absolutely needed to. We did have one resident that could not, but she's no longer there. So, I don't have any residents that are just totally not mobile. So, it may be a chore for them to get down the steps, and it may take them a while, but they can all do it. The majority of the ones that can't are on the first floor that would have the hardest time.
What does it look like when the elevator goes down? Who gets notified first, and then second, and tertiary city support from, from your elevator vendor, maintenance, that calling structure?
Well, it kind of depends on who gets stuck on the elevator, because some of them will call us at the office if it's during the day, and the guy on the maintenance can be there within five minutes to go open the door or to help them. And evenings and weekends, it goes directly to, the button goes directly to the fire department. That's why it depends on who's calling it. Residents that have lived there for twenty years, they call the office because they know they'll come get, we'll come get them out. So, the ones that are newer or something are at night, they'll press, it goes directly to the fire department, and then they call maintenance. As soon as maintenance gets a call, they go down there, and once maintenance gets there, they call TK, Elevator Company.
Is your guys' site installed as soon as you get, start working on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, cool. And then total practical, what, six weeks?
Five to six.
Yeah, five to six weeks, once we get on site.
Okay.
Because you gotta, you gotta remove all of it. Hopefully, the hole will still be good, because the height of that elevator is what has to go underground. So, as far as it travels up, it's gotta go that far underground. So, you gotta weld and screw together and get it set in, so it's quite a project.
It is, yeah. I didn't imagine it would take.
It all depends on the structure of the hole. The hole doesn't take in, or we have water issues, all that comes into play.
Sure.
And something that hasn't been mentioned is that jack in the small elevator was replaced at the end of December, December two thousand thirteen, it was finished at the beginning of January two thousand fourteen. We still don't know what the failure was, but it should not have failed again.
Yeah. Yeah, typical jack goes twenty to thirty years, so why this failed so quickly is something we'll know once it's, it's gone.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Jillin, do you mind just keeping us updated on how that's progressing? You might tell us.
Well, if, if I know something, yeah. I mean, I'll get a call when they, when they're coming.
Sure. Yeah. You guys will communicate with Jillin. Jillin will communicate with us, because of bigger issues and it takes longer. I think that we probably need to make sure our fire department knows that, um, so they're aware. I think there's a pretty large safety concern with that. So, um, I think it'd be good if everybody stayed on the same page and was aware, so as long as you know that, hopefully, if that does, so. Anything else anybody wants to add to that? If not, we'll move on to item number two. Okay, item number two, discussion overview of coma and cora. I'm gonna let Chris, our city attorney, kind of handle this a little bit, and, uh, from what I understand, there's still some, uh... Yeah, thank you guys for coming here. Same for that, so. And, uh, good, good luck on your endeavors on call April eighth, so. Yeah. But, uh, so I, I guess I'm saying there's, there's so many weird things about cora and coma and all that we learn every day. It seems like something new about it, so. Chris, I'll just let you kind of talk about it a little bit, and, and what our thoughts are on that, moving to court.
Absolutely, and I'll, I'll leave, Denise will jump in as well as our kind of cora coma guru as well. Uh, and this is titled cora coma. I think a lot of the court issues have been resolved. I know myself and Denise have requested copies of the agenda packet in advance in the minutes, and we now receive those, so we want to thank you, uh, definitely for that. Uh, just a couple offers in terms of coma. One, I provided you the packet from the AG. I think it provides a good overview of the coma and cora rules, and of course, myself, Denise, if you ever want to visit about any of those issues, uh, that's there. We've also done periodic coma training, and you all are obviously as a partner. Welcome to attend those and visit with us. I think, you know, some things that we see just kind of from a distance on some of these things, and I just wanted to kind of go over a review, and it's in that packet, but, uh... When we're talking about a motion to go into executive session essentially, which is an exception under coma record, you mean, talking about a motion that clearly delicates the subject, a single justification, and a time and place which the meeting would resume. And sometimes when we see those, those minutes, we do have some question in terms of the record, in terms of what happened. So, this isn't by any means that end all be all of this discussion, but I always wanted to open it up, and since we're meeting together as community partners, I thought it'd be a good time to, to kind of throw that out. I would see a pretty question on it. I know Denise would, but, uh, I think that would be, that would be our main concern in terms of coma. Obviously, we, we don't know what happens in those executive sessions. We don't know if binding action can be taken, but we kind of, since we infrequently attend those meetings, we rely on those minutes to have a good record in terms of what happened.
Could you explain again what, what the issue is on our end, as far as being compliant or whatever?
Well, yeah, enough to say what happens, but like, we'll look back at the minutes, and the justification will, will list essentially like four of the potential justifications, a single motion, with not, or any, any real indication in terms of what a justification was.
Closed session, you're in the top of the list?
Executive session, sure.
So, a couple questions. Is your closed session being called an executive session? Is that what, are you considering that an executive session as well?
I think we've used it, what, twice?
Yeah, it's on the very bottom of our agenda.
The executive session?
And we call it executive session.
Okay. So, what's the difference between your closed session, if you're citing, uh, these, um, reasonings for going into closed session, that's technically considered an executive session?
From what I understand, we have the right, if we're talking about things that can affect us financially or on purchases or things like that, that we can close a session if we need to.
Loans, personnel.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, well, there's two separate ones. You can have us, you know, the, the staff personal ones, but the main one we, I leave on there, I mean, just because it's, um... Something can come up for, just like the elevator situation and stuff, things like that, that, um, you know, we may have to talk about, big purchases.
Sure. Yes. Okay, so, um, two thousand seventeen, the laws changed, state statute changed, that you can only go into executive session for one item at one time. So, you can't, um, list every item that you're going into executive session for. So, say, in, in an example for us is, we want to talk about, um, attorney-client privilege, we're, we're gonna have that tonight. So, and maybe they want to also talk about, um, acquisition, acquisition of real estate. So, we couldn't make those go, it used to be that you could do all of that in one session. You, you would just cite both of those reasons. Now, you have to go into, open set our executive session to talk about acquisition of real estate, come back out, and then you have to go back into executive session, you have to make a motion to go back into executive session for your next item. You can't list all of these at one time. It has to be specifically for each item.
And I think that'd be helpful to us if we saw that in the minutes. So, this was the justification, this was the second one.
So, so Chris, I just want to add, because this is more from like my perspective than just being, how does that actually work and look like? Um, I don't know your guys' setting, but I assume you meet in the boardroom or something like that. You're probably not... Are you leaving the boardroom to go have that? Okay, so, like, what we, what we sometimes do is, if, if we have, when we have Thursday morning planes meetings, which are open meetings, if there's an executive session that's called sometime after that, we'll close the door, but then we just need to open up the door back up. When we go back into public meeting, if there was somebody in attendance, they are invited back in. Doesn't mean they have to come back in. Um, we'll open the door, we'll have, we'll call another, we'll end that executive session, call another executive session by stating the reason why, and then closing that door again, having our executive session, and then reopening it. So, it's, it's more of a, uh, we often think of it like, if there's conversations that are had, would they be able to be heard outside the door? That's concerned, I mean, like, is the door open, right? If the door's closed, it's not, um, that's a closed meeting, and so, um, it, it, that's what, it just didn't, as far as how that actually looks, that's what that looks like. So, we have commission chambers where we'll go in on a Tuesday night, have a regular meeting, but then we'll physically leave the room. If we need to call that meeting back in order for another executive session, we'll have to physically come back into the chambers and do that again. So...
And I see it, like, in your number of minute, uh, minutes, you do a good job of showing the time that went into the closed section or executive session, uh, and the time that the meeting resumed, but again, there isn't a clear indicator in terms of that justification was, so that's, that's...
So, you just need to, uh, spell out what the executive session is about?
Right, exactly. There's a clear template for the motion, and like I said, I'm happy to work with you on that, never a question on that.
So, if we, a lot of times we leave that wording in there, because we won't know until that day. Like, by the time we send the minutes to you ahead of time?
Sure.
It could change.
Yeah, for sure. We, we can amend an agenda quite, quite a bit, but the minutes should accurately reflect actually how it is.
Okay.
So, you could, like what we do, if, if we didn't know for sure, we knew that we were gonna need an executive session, and maybe we needed an executive session for a couple things, we would just call or put that on the agenda, it says executive session, and in parentheses, we say, "if needed." And then, if we don't need it, then you, you mark it, or you say on, you know, like you have it in the minutes, that no executive session was, was needed at that point. But then, we have, we have like a template, and we're happy to give that to you.
Okay.
The reasons that you can go into executive session, they're all listed on this, um, sheet here, but we do have that broken down a little bit, um, more, so that you can, you can just go and you can, you know... It's best if you state the motion and not say KSA five-two-oh, whatever, that we're going into executive session to discuss, um, financial affairs of whatever, or going into executive session to talk about acquisition of real estate, or non-like the personnel, whatever it is.
I think it's important to also state the time that meeting will resume.
Right, and they, they have done that, yes.
Okay. Stick to it. If you go beyond that, you need to come back, extend your time, and then go back to that, that pretty well satisfied that you guys are looking for.
Yeah, I think it's just to open up the dialogue, that you can go for years, community partner, and talk about those things.
Yeah, you're not gonna be in trouble with us, we don't want you to be in trouble.
Close session about residents and stuff, because that has to be behind those, what, what you...
It's still gonna be an executive session, correct?
Right, but...
We just have that.
We just report the action at any stage and not the conversation we have.
Of course, right.
Correct. I'm gonna say one, I mean, because the federal regulations, you know, we can't have open sessions about residents and stuff. They have to be closed.
Correct.
So, what category does that fall under?
Well, I believe you have one that excited, if, if appropriate. I mean, I don't know what under like acts, but under seventy-five forty-three nineteen, I think it's B... Five, which talks about residents of a public institution. I'm not familiar with the inner workings of those conversations, but that may be a justification. But again, if we see that single justification, I think that's, that's a better...
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure that that was gonna be good enough.
We will be doing coma training, and you guys are welcome to sit in on that if you want.
With us.
Hasn't been said yet, but we know what's going on.
Well, yeah, we will definitely. One of the things that I would, um, just reiterate is when you, like, if, um, no decision is made, usually you, if you're gonna make a decision of something that has to be done in open session, you have to make that motion, then in open session, everything. So, just for clarification, which you have been doing, or, um, that you would say, "no binding action was taken." I think that's really important for the minutes, so that people, anybody that wants to come look at those minutes, um, or if they would get audited, they're gonna wanna know if there was anything done, because then there's question about that. The last thing we want to do is have to, um, be turned in for violation of open meetings or Open Records Act, and, and, um, have to sit through the AG's presentation of that.
You're with, you were not pregnant?
Uh, no, I'm not too, because there's also a fine that could go along with that, and we don't want that to happen. And being a, a community partner, we, we're looking out for you as a board as well. We want to make sure that you're following the same rules that we're having to follow, so that none of us are gonna be in trouble for that, because we are ultimately the ones who...
I think the only difference is that we're, I don't know, I mean, I think there are a couple exemptions for us. I don't know what they are, I just don't, HUDD is expressed that we're supposed to have some exemptions in that. I don't know what they are.
Exemptions in what?
Well, some of it doesn't, okay. There are things that, that cannot be released.
Sure.
And things like that.
Sure.
That, that we have to do, that we're bound by, by federal law, and, and I can't pinpoint all of them, because I've only come across maybe one. But, you know, we also have to be careful that we're not violating that side also.
Correct, correct. Because you don't want to be audited by HUDD and, and...
Oh, we're not gonna be by HUDD.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, and then come in and find, find a, um, something that just wasn't... Yeah. And, and so it's just, the way to kind of keep us all...
My minutes go to HUDD.
Yeah.
So, if I'm understanding, for our minutes, the, the main thing we need to do is make sure when we enter executive session, we have different ones for different problems.
Correct.
Different events, and then we record those in the minutes appropriately.
The justification.
The justification. So, this way you go in, like, I'll use an example of what I do, and what you do is, is fine. Um, so you say, we're gonna go into, after they make the motion, and they, they say, "we're gonna go into to talk about acquisition of real estate," then, and who seconded, motion carried, and then I'll say, "the commission recessed to executive session at eleven o'clock and returned at eleven fifteen." And then I would say, "no binding action," and they are announced, no binding, and, and city, that would probably be your job as the chairperson, um, just to say, "no binding action was," even if there's nobody there, because, you know, we have times that there's nobody there, but we're also being live streamed, and so, um, we just want to make sure that we're letting everybody know that there's nothing funny going on or anything like that.
Do you have other questions? No, thank you for entertaining us on that. So, it can be kind of boring, but I think it gives us all a lot of trouble, so, uh, every once in a while, even your fine, even city commissioners are reminded of email communication and conversations and things, so...
Jillin, I'll, I'll get that, um, stuff to you. Gentlemen, I'll, I'll get that, um, stuff to you, um, hopefully that actually, so that even if that's, that's extra boring.
And item number three, we're gonna turn it over to y'all, uh, to discuss the discussion of the part of you with the fence line concerns, so we understand there's some concerns here, so we're gonna let you guys handle that, and you guys talk for a bit. So, this is our main point, the one of this, which we asked about, because we've tried to communicate a few times. I feel like there's some blockades, like, it's the best thing I'll get, we're ready to figure out what's the solution. You know, so, they've been a dangerous problem in a few situations. You know, we had actually an active shooter situation a while back, and I know that there were so many trees that was actually blocking light from, there's a streetlight right there, but it doesn't do any good. You may as well just take it out, except for winter time when it leaves. But, there's no visibility off that streetlight, so we have cameras there, but they couldn't do any good. Um, I know that we've had a problem with a lot of debris coming off the trees, getting on roofs, and breaking fences, and we've spent a lot of money out of our capital funds to try to remedy that situation. Uh, the sewer lines are atrocious over there, you know, which, we've replaced those, but at the same time, it's just a constant problem to treat, you know. Uh, also, basically, they block out enough light, and they're overgrown enough to where we can't grow grass. Period. So it's a muddy mess. Anytime it rains, it is just a mess. Pretty good to know about that. And then, there's been some fire dangers that have been discussed, you know, I mean, just from an interest perspective, from a liability perspective, it's like, man, this is, there's a lot of underbrush that is overgrown. There's a lot of dead trees, there's a lot of diseased trees that are in there as well. And so, you know, I contacted, uh, I just lost his name, Jerry Lewis, and I said, hey, is there, you know, is this our, like, how do we solve this? He was like, maybe talk to him, and I called him, they're like, oh yeah, we, we put that on schedule for me, and dismissed it. I was like, anything else I can do? Nope. Okay, well, I guess that's, gotta go to the city. So I don't know how we get to, who's supposed to maintain this, and how, how do we? Because if you look at the whole rest, like, I'll drop that whole path. I don't know if you guys have ever been out there at night, but it's like, I feel scared running through this. One little mini-section of this whole loop is beautiful, except for right here, why is this so messy? You know, and it kind of feels like, are we trying to hide something? Or, you know, what's the, what's the purpose here, you know? So, I thought that before I got on the Newton Housing Authority. And I'm on the Newton Housing Authority, and I'm like, my mother was taking a personally. You know, like, hey, you guys, are we hurting?
Please don't take it personally.
I know, I know. But, then I'm like, man, you know, it's, there's these two trees that come up over, and then they create this canopy, beautiful in the daytime, very dangerous during nighttime. So, you know, there's a little path in the fence right there, where somebody could be hiding in there. I mean, there's all sorts of crazy stuff, you know, that I'm just like, man, if you just create these, that gets all a whole lot of problems. And the first three trees are turned beautiful. Then it gets into all this, just nasty underbrush.
He was hoping for me to see the pictures that she's bringing her.
She needs to bring some pictures, and I think there's some, you know, it's pretty easy to see if you go out there and take a look at it, and it'll be helpful. I think that we have sent some people out there and taken some pictures too, and we have those for seating as well, maybe, or.
Yeah, pictures from your area.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's see what we can, unless we all wanna, well, we can't take a field trip there, because we'd be violating our meeting that we just talked about.
And one issue which I, that we've just found out, is we have HUD coming to do a react inspection for all of our, uh, properties the first of April, and if there are any trees touching our property, it's gonna be a problem.
What, what, explain, what do you mean touching? Explain that.
The tree limbs and stuff are growing onto the top of our roofs and on our siding.
Okay, so, I actually walked it today.
Did you?
There are no trees touching the property.
Well, because, because the leaves.
And I wanted to say, I walked the property today, and there are no trees touching it, and I wanted to commend whoever's been taking care of the property. It actually looks pretty good.
Well, when the leaves aren't there yet, and once those leaves and stuff, then, I mean, we'll have pictures. We pick up limbs, we've got pictures of them, when the wind blows. You know, there's, they're all over the place. I mean, the kids drive them out, I mean, they spend hours picking them up and trying to dispose of them. So, uh, I mean, there may not be any trees touching them right now, but I can tell you when the leaves reach them and stuff, there is.
And typically, that would be the property owner's responsibility for trimming them up off of their property. See, if my neighbor's tree overhangs my property, then I'm going to try and be a good neighbor and ask them, hey, you know, do you mind if I cut this? Will you cut that? Just have that discussion and everything. But if they don't do that, I have my own personal responsibility to protect my property and cut that back.
And, and we are fully worried about, what we're asking for is, for you guys to help get a little bit here and help us out, because we've spent tens and almost hundreds of thousands of dollars, a lot of money, and a lot, a lot of maintenance hours. It eats up a lot of our maintenance guys' hours just maintaining your trees. And so, I'm like, man, you know, how can we figure out how to come to a resolution on this? Because we're willing to maintain our property. In fact, we've also helped other property owners down there, that they, we know they can't afford to trim trees, so we just help them out, like, hey, we'll take care of that for you. So we're kind of asking for the same thing with you guys. We can't afford to take care of all those trees. We're willing to take care of some of it. But what can we come to an agreement on together? And really, it's a lot of the underbrush growth, and there's a lot of dead trees that are in the tree root right there. I think we could just clean it up and keep the healthy trees and let them flourish? That would be a good option. I don't know if you guys have a lot more resources when it comes to tree growth.
We don't want more trees to take care of.
You do, you definitely do. But we're the city of trees, we put awards for this stuff, right? So, we want to make sure that we really truly are a beautiful city when it comes to maintaining the trees.
And, you know, we are also financially limited, what HUD will allow us to spend money on. I mean, they crawl through those audits like crazy. So, you know, I have to plan five years out, if I'm gonna spend money to trim trees. I mean, it's not a simple process to go through.
We're, we're highly accountable to HUD. It is probably the most rigorous accounting process I've been through, ways more than in business, that's for sure. And, uh, they are very adamant on how we are not supposed to spend our money. They don't like us to do that, so.
Can I ask a question real quick, on the, where is the streetlight? Suzanne, don't leave that map. Where's the streetlight that you're talking about that's covered by the trees?
Kind of down the corner, be down toward the two.
I, I think that we would probably have some, uh, disagreement on the use of the word "active shooter." We talked about this particular situation. Um, I think that's a strong word to use, but, uh, it would resolve fairly quickly. Police were there and took care of this particular situation.
Yeah, it was a domestic.
Disturbance, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there was an assault weapon.
Yeah, there was a murder.
A murder. Yeah, definitely, yeah. So, we, to us, that was pretty extreme, you know, so. Uh, it is, no doubt. Um, so where's, okay, so where's the streetlight? Somebody help me out. I'm not overly familiar with property. I've dropped somebody off there once or twice, but that's probably it, so.
So, here's third street.
Okay.
Where, where, where are you saying?
I believe it's at the bottom, towards the walking trail. It actually goes over.
Down here.
Back, there's a streetlight back there.
There is.
And so we're the walking trail, we, we're close to the walking trail. And where was the shooter? I don't remember.
I believe it was all the way up on fourth street.
So that light probably wouldn't have did anything.
The police were coming in, trying to surround the property.
Sure.
All sides, who are standing up.
Yeah, we just don't want, we don't want any health or safety concerns for them. We want them to be able to do their jobs effectively and not have something like this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and so do we. I, I, I'm willing to have a conversation about trees along Sand Creek that are touching the roof. I think it's probably, uh, complete, I mean, I don't know if we'll ever reach a resolution on how to be trimming enough trees that the police always have their line of sight in that night in a situation. I mean, I live in a, a neighborhood that's not extremely old, and there's problems there with trees already. So, um, if the streetlight is down in that corner, but the other situation was up on fourth, I don't know that the streetlight that was there probably wouldn't have did any good, and, and even to a certain degree, uh, the police might wanna operate to cover a darkness anyways, so.
But I'm expecting, just for the safety concern, as a citizen, I'm gonna do it for. I mean, I avoid that area if I walk, or my kids are gonna run that route, because it's dangerous over there. Scared. Nobody needs to be over there.
So, if, I mean, I'm sure you guys, I mean, hope you walk that part of the city. It's a beautiful part of the city, really. The whole loop, all the way up to twelve, all the way down, except for that one little spot.
Right.
How can we make that equally beautiful with the rest, uh, there, because we're trying to maintain the property. We're trying to, but why would I plant grass if it's not gonna grow?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we will, we will spend and allocate dollars to put that in there more beautiful and improve the property as much as we can. But if we're spending all our money on trimming the trees back, we can't yet afford to do it. Suzanne, I think Suzanne has.
Well, I just wanted to make one comment about lighting. Um, you know, park staff, we would love to have lighting along, along Sand Creek Trail, but we don't have lighting along the trail, and there's all, we don't, we, we just don't. Um, because it would be expensive and difficult to get in there at this point, but we could, we could add it. The reason you see lighting, say, on the other side of the creek, is because there's a roadway immediately adjacent to it. And so, lights that are lighting the roadway itself is what's lighting, happens to be lighting the path. But, the pathway itself is not lit, and there's really some darker areas than this, north of twelve street.
Uh-huh. And there's some streetlights up there too, on the path, also.
We have one, um, one, yeah, north of there, north of, say, the railroad trestle area.
Yeah.
That, um, is a, a solar power light that we, we have been pilot testing. But, we don't have lighting at all on the path, uh, so I'm not sure. And if the goal was to have the whole pathway lit, we would have different types of lights than a streetlight itself, because the whole beauty of the path is to have the trees along there, and I.
It's a secondary issue.
Right, the light is a secondary. So, I, so let's, let's, I mean, let's just try to focus on what the primary issue is, and it's largely the, the, the limbs that touch the house, right? I mean, we, we can agree that lighting along Sand Creek may not be the best. It's better in some spots. I'm, I'm looking at an overhead map here, and what's unique about that particular place is how close the housing is, which is nobody's, I mean, I don't know when that was built, forty, fifty years ago, right?
Seventies.
Seventies, yeah, so fifty years.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, okay, so.
It's not somewhere in there.
Yeah, so forty-seven years ago, almost fifty now, did we think that this, you know, these trees were gonna, I don't know. I mean, we're planting trees today, but I don't know what we're thinking about what's gonna be built there in fifty years, but, um, there's trees all along.
I would say.
Are, are there, so.
These trees are exceptionally close to the fence. I mean, like, some of them are almost grown in the fence.
And again, I think largely because of just the limited space that we have between the names of Sand Creek and where the housing is, and that's not anyone's fault, it's not your guys' fault, it's not ours. It's just, that's the way it is there. Um, we have a lot more flexibility in, in some of those other places to put a fence further back, and obviously, we don't want trees growing through fences either, so, um. What would you guys suggest? I guess that's what we would like to hear, is what, what can we do? What would you?
Well, I think Commissioner Siniff is right, in the sense that largely trees that invade our property lines, um, are, are typically, even in a neighborhood, are, are usually, um, you, you have the ability to do what you need to do. I was, when we first had this conversation, I was thinking in our previous home, we had sewer, tree roots in a sewer line, and I did not have any trees near the sewer line where the roots were. I just worked it up into the sewer. It was obviously a neighbor's problem, but it was on my property, and I had to be responsible for it. So I don't want us to end this conversation by saying, you guys go figure it out on your own and do it.
Yeah.
Um, what's mutual, I'm not sure, what, what do you guys want from us? What, what are you asking?
I'd love for you to trim every tree down, start over, but I know that's not.
Not gonna happen, so.
So, I mean, I'd love to see you keep the trees that are good.
Yeah.
Get rid of all the crap, because there's stuff in there that just shouldn't be there. I mean, dead tree limbs that have been there for five plus years, that's ridiculous. You guys, everybody looks at, like, that's just cleanup of your yard. Like, if, if I have a bunch of dead trees in my yard, Jerry Lewis is gonna be knocking on my front door. I get so many letters from that guy. I like him. He's a great guy, super, and by the way, he's a professional. Hundred percent. I'm sure he gets all that, all day, every day, professional.
Yes.
So, I, I love Jerry as a person and as an employee of the city, he's fantastic. However, I get letters from him all the time, but I can't actually send you a letter, because he works for him. So we're just asking for you to basically treat that property the way you ask us to treat all of our own properties.
Sure.
That's, I think that's fair.
And, and one thing is, I am having the answer to Kansas City and the HUD about these trees, because they are kind of involved in it now, because it's been such a problem.
What, what are they, what's, what questions are they asking, or what do you?
Well, I mean, we're.
They're telling us, why are you paying pilot taxes, if they're not gonna help?
Right, and why are, why, it's hard for them, we have so many needs and so many repairs on the properties. And HUD doesn't want us spending money trimming the city's trees, is what I was told. I mean, we have to get this stuff approved, whether we can do it or not. So, they kind of have a problem with it too. So that's why we've been working so hard to try to come up with a solution to it. Because, you know, we've sent the pictures to Kansas City, and they've known from the last react inspection, because this stuff costs us funding.
So when they write us up, we get docked for that.
Sure.
And then, that's just, never if the problem gets worse and worse over the years. And so, it's been a problem for about two years from a HUD perspective, and they're like, why can't you guys solve this? We can't have the money to, to trim them all, and we gotta give the city to have them figure out what they're gonna do on that side. So, that's why we're here, is to figure out, how do we resolve this? Because we, we don't wanna keep having funding issues, we don't want it to get worse with HUD. And we have to explain how we're gonna spend our capital fund, and you guys are just spending sixty thousand dollars cutting down trees, what? You know, like, we're gonna boil the gas, you know, so, that's a problem.
Well, yeah, we don't let the trees cut down, that's for sure, but, uh, Suzanne, can you, can I show other pictures? Can we see those unless we wanna add something else to this conversation?
Yeah, I would add, if there's, if we have dead trees, our intent is never to keep dead trees.
That's why I wonder if we could look at those pictures to see what's going on there.
Here?
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, I mean, that's.
Everything's drawn to this higher tree.
I know, it's hard to tell, it kind of works.
These were taken last week, I think it was, thirty.
I took some probably two months ago or something, but.
Also, if, um, for the record, if there's a particular person that's, um, for the record, if, if there's a particular person that we can help you with, like, it's, like, at HUD or whomever, like, please, refer them to me, refer them to Suzanne, um, the mayor, whomever. Like, we are happy to help him and partner. I think if there's really specific examples that we can address, we, we are absolutely happy to do that.
Well, anytime. And, and that gets sent off to you guys too.
Yeah, absolutely, we love that.
No, no, well, I don't know what, what, what are you gonna tell HUD? You're not gonna, I mean, we need to know if they're gonna be trimmed or not. That's what we need to know, and that's what they're wanting to know. Is, is what, from what I.
Sure, I mean, if there's, if, if there is limbs that are touching the top of roofs, perhaps, we can be a good neighbor to you and help take care of that.
We've pretty much trimmed those back at this point.
Okay.
We've been trying to maintain that.
Well, there's still some that have problems, you know, like, I don't know if this picture's taken. I mean, it's not quite touching, but it's pretty close, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's a little picture though, too, let's, yeah, let's be fair there. That's a whole picture, but it still has leaves on it, so.
It is. So when the leaves start coming on, like, we, we've trimmed a lot of these back, but they will be, they will become a problem in a couple of months.
Sure, and, and I think that we can, we can take a look at it in a couple of months as well. It's gonna be hard now, right, to determine what needs to be trimmed and what doesn't. If there's something that's closer than their leaves on it, then, yep.
Um.
I mean, we have a tree limb out there right now damaged the fence. It's coming from that side of the fence, and it fell into the fence today. Did that happen today? I don't know what day it happened.
I didn't see any top rails of the fence damaged at all when I went out on my walk today.
Well, then the guys must have cleaned, is it a tree limb, is it gone now?
There, there was no limbs over.
Okay, well, then my guys probably did it and fixed it then.
So, the, the rents are used to fund the property, right, so?
Well, it's a combination of, of funds.
There's, there's three different funding levels. There's rent, okay? There is operating subsidy.
Yeah.
And there is capital funds. All three of them have certain things that you can spend the money on and what you can't spend the money on. So I can't take the rent money and just choose what I want to spend that on. I can to a degree, but it can only be spent for certain things.
Right, and you have to reinvest, certain funds have to be reinvested back into the property. And both on the operational and on the capital investment side.
Right.
That's right.
And, and we are responsible, if the tenants don't, and the family units don't have them. Right, and, and we are responsible, if the tenants don't, and the family units don't have them, we have to leave them money to pay their utilities. If they don't have enough money to pay their utilities, we have to issue utility checks to them to pay for those utilities. We are not reimbursed for that, so we have, that money in turn comes out of the rent money that we collect. And the twenty-some thousand dollars of pilot taxes that we pay to the city each year also has to come out of that rent money that's collected. So, when you have, some people paying fifty dollars a month rent, and that includes utilities, it, sometimes it's not a whole lot of rent money left.
Right, so when we look at the, the trees problem, I think it's easier, how do you even help it? One by one at a time, you find the problematic tree and you address that, bring it to the city, and come up with a plan to address that tree, and then we move on to the next one. It might not be something that gets solved right away, but at least it's moving in the right direction, and that would be the recommendation that I would say, is that we make this a living conversation, we find the most problematic one. We address that issue, and we move on to the next one.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, that's something that we can do pretty easily. Um, we, we do want, though, keep in mind, we, the whole purpose of Sand Creek is to give sort of an apple field, somebody can walk down, and, and we want to maintain the integrity of that. Uh, that's a, we've had that conversation before, this wasn't the conversation that we started because we're talking about trees along your guys' property, but um, we want that along Sand Creek from First Street all the way up to Twelve and beyond, even as you get up to that north end of the creek, but we want to maintain that integrity of, of the trail, but we want to be good neighbors to you as well, so. Uh, I, I think a fair place to leave this, if, if you guys are amenable to it, is that we'll have more discussion about this, and, and we'll figure out an action plan. I think it's harder right now to decide how much or what to trim. You know, I, I always see trees or leaves or branches in my trees in summer, and I think, man, I need to get those down before the leaf fall, and before I know it, the leaf fall, I don't remember which branches I need to cut, so. So let us do that, if there's not, currently, if there is not today anything touching the top of the roofs, as Commissioner Smith said, there was, I think that we have just a little bit of time, we can come up with an action plan, and we do want to be good neighbors to you. Um, but keep in mind, though, we're not, we're, we don't have the intention, and probably won't have the intention of, of cutting down more trees than what need to be, or cutting down any at all, to be honest, to really trim. Uh, but we don't want to lose what vegetation we have along Sand Creek, so.
Can we look at having a point of contact for the city, a single point of contact?
Sure, I don't think we want to be, we'll figure that out, though.
Okay.
Yeah, we just call me.
Okay, that would be way easier, because I mean, we don't need to waste our time, you know, and so it's one of those things, like, we can say, hey, we've got two trees that are problematic right now, can we get those knocked out the next month and fall, you know, and then you guys can say, hey, you know, as the attorney says, these two trees are a problem, you guys approve? Yes, go for it, you know, whatever, and then we can walk through that all the way down, and then the underbrush and the cleanup, I mean, hopefully we can do that all this, because of a log sitting there, obviously, that is speaking about so, you know, whatever it is, so, I don't know, I know we don't want to trim the trees down, but if there's well, underbrush that are basically overgrown weeds that don't look very good, will we take care of those? I mean, we have people that are way more skilled and more experienced than I am, so.
Really?
Yeah, that's not my specialty at all, all I always do is some
Do you know, look at all, all of this stuff?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I think, we just need to talk to our park staff about that.
I think they have a big old mower, and just, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, thank you, we'll let them decide, they have training and expertise in that, more than many of us do in this room, so. Uh, I'm just wondering, though, what are your guys' plans for what's across the street from you, along the tree road there?
Well, we've already claimed to trim about, well, we've cut down four of the neighbor's trees already, and we've trimmed some of them, because we had no choice, because they had, had no money.
Okay.
So, yeah, that came out of the rent money.
So we're trying to be a good neighbor to them as well, you know, we want to beautify the entire neighborhood, that's a low-income neighborhood, and we didn't make it as, as great as we possibly can, and I appreciate that. They deserve to have a good place to live too, you know, nobody should be discriminated because they have low-income wealth.
And if there's, yeah, I mean, as far as grass and things are concerned, I, I would say it would be, we have plenty of guys in the city, and, and gals as well, who are very passionate about grass and plants, and would be glad to help, if you could help us on that, basically. We not do it, but we'll provide direction, I'm sure, on what grows good in low sunlight conditions with minimal watering, too, and I know we have some good grasses in Kansas that can do that, so. I, I know myself and the attorney Chris are passionate about grass, so, we can, we can help with that. Although I was agitated by army worms last year, so I'm still recovering from that, so. Yeah, I understand, please do understand that, you know, we want to be a partner to you guys, and, and we want to
Well, that's why we're having this conversation, we, we don't want to be tensionated, we just, we want to work together and work with you guys to figure out, what is the solution, I like the solution.
Yeah, just give us a little bit of time, I mean, you know, um, let, let's get some, maybe get some leaves on, but if, if HUD does design jilin, if, if they're gonna be here earlier than what trees, than what the leaves would allow us, then please say so, you know, just communicate with us. And, and I'm certain that, that we have some guys that would be, be able to stop by and, and help out with
They will be here April seventh and eighth.
Okay, we'll keep those dates in mind, so, we'll keep April eighth in mind, because isn't that when the elevator thing's getting fixed too, so that's a big
That's the day the jack's gonna be shipped.
Oh, it's gonna be shipped, okay, shipped, shipped, okay, well, yeah. Yeah, still a good day, okay, April eighth, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm certain Suzanne can follow up with you, we'll, we'll see if there's anything current protection, and if that needs done, and then as those leaves develop on the tree, we'll make sure to keep them on, is that, is that okay with you guys?
That's great.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Like I said, if there's something we can do to help with HUD, please just say, please say, if, if we can put some in writing, like, whatever we can, we can do.
Yeah, they weren't being hard on us, they weren't making
They don't think we need to trim the trees.
They're not, they're, they're
Yeah, right.
They're very, like, I don't know, a lot of the
And they think they are a lot, they're just not the leader of us, they just, you know.
Hey, well
How do you manage a typical
Yeah.
They think, well, we, we're the federal government, we can do that, so.
We're efficient, we have, uh, we have, I, I have, and I know the rest of our commission does, full faith in our, in our leaders in the city, they work there every single day, so um, we'll, we'll do what we can to help get this resolved, and we're efficient enough that we're down two minutes early, so. Anything else from anyone? Commissioners, or members, okay, thank you, yeah, this is people's, so, thank you.